Okay, Mr. Decker, Ms. Felton, Mr. Sokolowski, Alex, and John, Mr. Staberski. So we have everybody? Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe it's seven, it's seven o'clock and we're gonna open a meeting. Any new business by anybody by chance? Any comments? Okay, we're gonna open the meeting. Anna Colo has filed an application to appeal the decision of the building commissioner dated November twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen for the property located at One Steam Mill Road, wherein the commissioner denied the petitioner a building permit for the reconstruction of a single-family residence located on One Steam Mill Road based on his determination that the lot was a non-conforming to frontage and area. Okay, I guess we would like a comment from Ms. Colo or your representative?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Don Dubendorf. I'm an attorney in Williamstown, and I'm here on behalf of Ms. Colo. What we have here is a non-conforming lot. Been there for a long time. And it, it has a, a building on it that has served as a single-family dwelling unit. The dwelling has been on the, that parcel since nineteen thirty. So some ninety years. Ms. Colo looks to tear down the existing dwelling and rebuild on site. A new dwelling on site. The existing dwelling is conforming to all of the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. And the new proposed dwelling also complies with the setbacks and the rest with, with respect to the bylaws dimensional requirements. The only status of, of the reason we're here and the reason in fact why the building inspector issued his decision and we're not, we're, 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 we understand why he issued his decision is because the lot is non-conforming as to frontage and area. This comes under provisions of her bylaw, but more importantly, under provisions of forty eight, section six, which is the zoning act. The zoning act carves out special treatment for one and two-family dwellings. And most recently, the appeals court in May of this year gave, I've been doing this for a while, forty some years, gave the most lucid and clear set of directions with respect to understanding the protections under section six for one and two-family dwelling uses. And two things are clear here. One, the building, the existing building is not non-conforming because of the non-conforming nature of the lot. And the building that is proposed will not be non-conforming and not compliant with the bylaw because of the non-conforming nature of the lot. The lot is protected, it is non-conforming, it's protected by section six, and the rights of Ms. Colo to rebuild on site is also a protected right. And the way it works is as follows. If I go from non-conforming structure to a reconstructed building, new non-conforming, or a new conforming structure, I get a building permit. If I extend an existing structural or building non-conformity, I require a special permit. And if I create a new non-conformity, i.e. I go closer to a lot line or I, I exceed the, the existing coverage requirements that I already exceed, if I create new non-conformities, I need a variance. In this case, we're not extending a, a structural non-conformity because there is none. We're not creating a new non-conformity because the new, new building will comply with all the requirements of the bylaw. The last thing I'd say about that Colo case, again, it's an appeals court case that, that makes it very clear is that the status of the lot as non-conforming and protected does not affect or infect the building itself. In other words, there are two different measurements of what's going on. One's the lot and the other is the building. So what we're asking the board to do tonight is to overturn the decision and direct the building inspector to issue a building permit on the basis of his zoning determination. He's got, of course, determined that all other requirements of the building code, et cetera, are satisfied. But only the zoning board of appeals can give us the relief we're looking for here tonight.
Okay, we have any members have any questions? Please remember, state your name for the record so that we can record this in our, for our scribe. Mr. Sokolowski?
I can't hear you.
Good evening, Counselor. Yeah, sorry, I, I had to unmute there. Adam Sokolowski for the record. When was the ruling on this case? How recent is it?
It was May of twenty. Oh, wow. And it's been, I must tell you something, it, it, it isn't brand new. There have been a series of cases that have looked at aspects of this, but this is the first case in a long time that revisits these issues of the protection granted to one and two-family dwellings under section six that does it in a comprehensive fashion. Because it had, interestingly enough, it's, it's had all of, all of the issues were presented in the case. It was a, it was a ZBA in Gloucester that Comstock was one of the parties and the ZBA in Gloucester was the other. So it was brand, it was the new case that I'm referring to. But that was, that was the case before that. It's just I refer to that because it's so clear and so broad and it's Assembly of the Existing Authority.
All right, well, it sounds good. I mean, it's, it sounds fine to me that I would overrule the building inspector's decision on this based on that, that new case and, and the, has changed, but it makes me feel bad for the folks that we saw last time. I mean, I abstained on that issue there because you know, this information of this new case is valuable pertaining to these situations. That's all I have.
Anyone else have comments? Bob, Bob, Walden?
Bob Walden, Building, Building Commissioner. I, I'm happy to learn, you know, to, that this case has come forth, the, just to make Adam feel better. The last one was also a non-conforming structure because it was within four feet of the property line, so that I mean, I wouldn't feel too terrible about that, that, that was a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot.
And that's a, that's a different case that we have here.
Mr. Dubendorf, please, please give us your name again, please.
Forgive me, sir. I apologize for that. Again, it's Don Dubendorf. That's the, because it was a non-conforming structure, that's different from our facts here. We have a conforming building and propose a conforming building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else questions?
I, I think it sounds very reasonable.
John, remember, name, please.
John Staberski here. You know, I, I, I think that case is on point and applies to the situation and I think it's appropriate that we allow the petitioners, allow the petition.
Okay, any other comments by anyone? Kathy?
Kathy Felton. I just want to thank Ms. Colo for bringing this to our attention and all the information with her lawyer because I think this will be helpful with some of our decision-making moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to close discussion?
They're moved.
Second.
Okay, seconded. So I believe we have to take a vote on it.
Mr. Dubendorf, while he's doing the roster, do you have a site on that case?
Yes, I do. It's, uh, let me get it for you. It's, uh, it's, it's Comstock, C-O-M-S-T-O-C-K versus the ZBA of Gloucester. Let me give you the, the site for you. It is ninety-eight Mass App one sixty-eight.
Thank you.
And the date on that is May sixth twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's take our vote to close discussion. Ms. Felton?
Yes, I vote to close the discussion.
Mr. Decker?
I vote to this, to, to close.
Thank you. Mr. Staberski?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sokolowski?
Yes, we enclose discussion.
And Alex, oh, Alex is, I concur, so it's a unanimous decision to close? Actually, we don't need Alex to vote. Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Do I have another motion now to accept?
I just, I just have one question, Bernie. Bob Decker.
Yes.
I have a question. Is there anybody on who's opposed? Oh, a butters or anybody else? Yes.
Nobody has said anything.
Okay, I just wanted to, are we?
Okay, thank you, Bob. Motion?
I move that we award the special permit.
Okay, do I have a second?
Seconded, Adam.
Mr. Dubendorf, do you have a, is there better wording you would like?
Yes, I, I think, I think you should vote to overturn the decision of the building inspector.
Okay.
Day at eleven twenty-five nineteen.
So I, I move that we, I withdraw that motion and move that we overturn the, the building inspector's denial of the building permit of the day cited by Mr. Dubendorf, Attorney Dubendorf.
Seconded, Adam.
Okay, thank you. So what we're voting on is to over, to both to overturn the building inspector, his decision to deny a permit. Is that good enough wording for everybody?
Is it the building, or the building inspector?
Bernie, would you like my, my, my?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Well, I move that Deerfield ZBA overturn its building inspector's denial of the, of building permit.
Vote to overturn the building inspector's denial of this application. Does that sound good enough?
Of the building permit, yeah.
Building permit, I'm sorry.
He's the commissioner? Yes, because he's the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, so say the commissioners, rather than the building inspector, I move that we substitute commissioner for building inspector.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. All right, now we got that wording straightened out. All right, let's take a, let's take a vote. Let's start, Ms. Felton. Now, we're voting a yes means we're gonna overturn the building inspectors. We're gonna, we're gonna overturn what he's done, is what it comes down to simply. All right, so a yes vote means we're gonna overturn Bob Walden's denial, correct? Okay, so we, we're looking for a yes or no vote. Okay, Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Staberski?
Yes.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Okay, thank you. So we'll draw it up and send that out to you.
Bernie, I have one question. What was it? What was the denial from the, the building commissioner?
Believe it was eleven twenty-five, Mr. Decker.
That's why, but there was a, all right. I just want to make sure we got the right date. Okay.
It, it was denied at eleven twenty-five.
Okay, just want to make sure we got the right date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess we're all set. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the board. I appreciate your time.
All right. Next applicant is for aromatic fillers has filed an application for a special permit for the property. Now, here we go, fogging glasses. Property located at the two fifty-three Green, Greenfield, two fifty-three Greenfield Road to utilize the existing building for a new client showroom design and development of new products, testing, light manufacturing of scented products which include candles, re-diffusers, hand soaps, and sanitizers. Is that a correct description of what we're looking at? Who, who are the people gonna represent us here?
Hi, I'm Christie Bodine. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Tony? Mr. Sodowsky?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself from this matter because of a conflict. So I know Mr. Redder's here and I'm sure he can fill my tiny shoes.
Okay, so let's
Thanks.
Have a good night, John. Nice to see you again.
Sure, thank you.
Um, let me, so let me take a roll of that then. So we get this right. Mr. Decker is present. Ms. Felton is present. Mr. Sokolowski is present. I am present. Alex is present. John, you want to be listed as absent or just not?
No, you should, you should list me as recused
Okay.
on this, on this matter. And I will leave the meeting as soon as this formality is done.
Okay, so John has recused himself. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The attorney representing the petitioner did some legal work for me a number of years ago. I need to disclose that.
Okay. Um, I, I guess procedure on that is is there gonna be anyone that's gonna question this? That he has been, done work for?
Can I ask who he is? I'm only seeing a telephone number.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. This is Mr. Decker. Would you repeat that, please?
Yes, I, I think this attorney represented me in a civil service appeal seventeen, eighteen years ago.
I think it was that long ago, yes. I remember.
Okay, so I, I need to close that, I think.
Yeah, well, thank you, Bob. Does anybody have a question or is uncomfortable with that?
If Bob is okay with it, then I, I think it's okay with me.
Okay, Kathy?
Let's close it.
No problem.
Uh, Adam?
I, I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. So we've got our so we have our five, we have our five voting members. Um, the attorney would like to, are you gonna present something for us or?
I'm actually gonna turn the presentation over to Tony Wenceski. He prepared the application and he's most knowledgeable about it.
Okay, thank you. When we, again, go through this, please state your name because somebody might be listening just on the, the audio part of this, and we also need to record this for our scribe for the minutes of our meeting. So please state your name when you, if you speak. Try to recognize through the board, please, so we, we don't get too bottle up. I don't think there's gonna be much of a problem tonight, but I ask that people just take a break and get recognized before they speak, so we're not speaking over each other. Okay, I'm sorry. Is it Mike?
Can I say one thing, Bernie?
Yes.
So I muted somebody that's on the call, like phoning in. If they want to unmute themselves or mute themselves, it's star six on the phone. And it's star nine to raise your hand to make a comment. So, because I just muted them because there was static.
Okay. Are they back?
Are, are we ready to start?
Um, I believe we are. Is it, is it Mike or Tony?
No, this is Tony, this is Tony Wenceski, Civil Engineer with SVE Associates and have been working with Christie and Todd on this. We had to go for site plan review and, and did that on Tuesday through the planning board. And we're here this evening under section fifty-three hundred requesting a special permit because of section twenty-two hundred of the by, bylaw, which has to do with square footage and also use. As mentioned in the application and preamble, there will be some research innovation design work which may trigger that portion of twenty-two hundred for use. So on behalf of aromatic fillers, we're, we're requesting that special permit to allow them to lease the existing vacant building at two fifty-three Greenfield Road. And Jennifer, I'm not sure if you can bring the site plan up. It might be helpful for people that can view it on the line. You know, they can see what, what it looks like. There's very little site improvements with this with this proposal because the building is, is, meets the requirements and that Todd needs for his business. Aromatic fillers headquarters is in Greenfield, everybody knows, and there a couple of other buildings that he utilizes in Greenfield. His goal is to move out of the two satellite buildings in Greenfield and consolidate his efforts from those two buildings in this building. As you know, two fifty-three Greenfield was formerly the Volvo and Saab dealership and it's now vacant. The property is owned by Mr. Bedard, Michael Bedard, and it's about three point seven acres in size. The building gross footage is, by the assessor's card, is fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen square feet. Portion of the property is, is left natural because it's, it's encumbered with wetland resources, so you know, although it's a fairly large lot, not all of that lot is used because of those wetland resources. Because we're not doing any real site improvements, we did not go out and survey this, but we compiled the site plan to let everybody see what the site does look like. So you'll see the aerial photograph that we're using here was back when the Volvo dealership was active. That's why you have all of those cars in that being shown. There are two curb cuts that access the property. And we will have our two dumpsters out in back, so they'll be screened from five and ten or Greenfield Road. There's a ten-yard recyclable bin and a ten-yard waste bin. One of the improvements that's going to be, as proposed, is a gate right at the entrance coming in. You'll see right there, we're gonna put a gate in and extend it over to the property line. It'll be black vinyl, so it'll match up with our southerly of butter, the storage place, so it'll look very similar to that. And we're just wanna off, off-hours restrict any vehicle traffic that can get behind the building. Right now, you can get back there. It's fairly dark except for overflow lights from the storage place. We are not proposing any lighting. There's two floodlighting off existing lights that front, you know, that light the front portion of the property and that's adequate for, for their business. The other minor site improvement that we'll do in our application, you'll notice that from time to time the business has three to four potential customers, new customers or repeat customers come to the facility and look at either new products or they design new stuff to, to meet their demands. So with that case, we are proposing to put two ADA spaces and signage in front of what used to be the Saab portion of the dealership because it's fairly flat there and there is an existing ramp that gets you up into the, the front door of that portion of the facility. Those are the only site improvements that are proposed. There's more than adequate parking for Todd's use. They're projecting anywhere from twelve to fifteen employees would be at this facility. And then there could be one or two box trucks, twenty-six foot wide box trucks that would shuttle product between the Greenfield headquarters and this facility. So the traffic impacts on to Greenfield Road is gonna be significantly less than what was experienced from an auto dealership. That's just, you know, auto dealerships have a pretty good active ADT use. And this would probably generate maybe with four customers and and the employees about seventy trips per day. So it's, and that's if they, all the employees went out for lunch. So it's much less traffic impact. Christie has reached out to Jeff Ely, or Jay Ely, I'm sorry, at Mass DOT to see if we had to get a permit for this and they were just requesting a letter from us stating the change in use and they were fine with that. The property is served by municipal water. South Deerfield Water District supplies water to the building. And there's an onsite septic in the lawn area on the north side of the building, which I believe was updated recently. We obtained the septic plan from Mr. Kalaszewski just to show the location of that on the site. The business typically operates between seven and four, Monday through Friday. In the fall time seasonally, there's, there is a potential for some Saturday operational hours just because it's the season. And this, this is in the commercial two zone, just so you know that, and the map number is for this, assessor's map is one twenty-two and it's lot four. And I think that's it from a site plan review on Todd, the CEO. He can talk a little bit more about the business for you, introduce you to that type of the work that they do and and then we can take any questions that the board or public may have. Thank you very much.
Todd? Good evening. My name is Todd Green from aromatic fillers. So like Tony mentioned, we operate our business in, our main business in Greenfield where we do mass production on Haywood Street and the two satellite buildings, just like you described. So what we're planning to move down there is actually have a much more beautiful building for our clients. We don't have a, we don't have retail clients that walk in the door. It's not like that. Everything we make is for private label and is sold across the country and the world. So this opportunity comes up to allow us to get into one location that has a nice space that's very presentable and easy access from the highway for our clients to visit. They can see a snapshot of everything we do in Haywood Street in Greenfield, but on a much smaller scale in a nice location. The, the piece that I think we talked about in the preamble, it says all the different activities that we would be doing there on a small scale. And the piece that maybe
On my computer.
I didn't hear what that comment was.
Go ahead. I just muted her.
Oh, okay. So the, it might be the comment when I was asked to give a description about the new products and the testing and things like that. It isn't a scientific lab or anything where we're doing anything with hazardous waste or creating hazardous waste or doing anything that might be perceived like that. It's really a test kitchen. So if some, if we have a client that you know, they want to look at a vessel like this and we want to make small samples, we're not gonna put it on a giant line. We'll make it in a, in a small kitchen environment. That's, that's that part of the business that will happen there. It's just one segment and that would happen in what used to be like the parts room and, and behind the dealership. The showrooms are going to be a conference room and, and like a display. So you'd either be, you'd have your meeting there, you'd have a display. And in the back where they repaired the cars, that's where we would store some material and we will have like a small setup for doing boutique, real small production. So like when it's a first run, somebody has something and they're buying three hundred units, they're gonna come and we'd be able to do it there. And the idea is they see everything under one roof. And they don't have to come to my very ugly building in Greenfield, which is an old concrete GTD building. That's about a hundred years old. So that's the gist of it. Thank you. And I can answer any questions. If you know just a little bit more about our business. I've been in the candle business since the ninety-one. I worked for Yankee and I've worked for five other large manufacturers across the country, came back here. Our business is a six-year-old profitable, profitable business. I cannot hear the chairman.
Hold on. Well,
We can hear you now, Bernie.
All right. Well, what's going on here? I'm not surprised. Can you hear me now, Mr. Green? Okay, thank you. Questions by any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Decker.
How many square feet are going to be devoted to the manufacturing? Is it a couple hundred square feet or is it a thousand square feet or is it fifteen thousand square feet?
It's two thousand, about two thousand.
Not not to exceed two thousand? I don't want to kick in, but I want to know.
I didn't hear what the comment was.
I don't want to hem you in, but is it two thousand square feet would be the max probably?
I don't know the exact measurement, but it's the very back repair bay. It's it's about, even if we said it's a third of the entire building. So even if it was five thousand, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
It's it's mostly for the term in the military is dog and pony show. You have everybody come, and they can see a little bit of everything. And we have it in one nice location. Our building in Greenfield is forty thousand square feet where we actually have full production lines.
My other question is, right now, there's a grandfather use in that building for automobile sales. If, in my opinion, if the board votes to grant a change of use, that grandfather use will disappear, I think. I don't know if the owner of the building realizes that or not, but I just want to make make that known that they would probably lose that, in my opinion. So.
If I can speak up a little bit, this, one of the reasons for
Name, please.
Christie Bodine, attorney for the applicant, Mr. Sodowsky.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, one of the reasons that we applied for a special permit was because the use as an automobile dealership and service center predates zoning. So there has never been a special permit issued for this for this property ever, ever in the in history. So that was one of the reasons that one was required, and the the owner of the building understands that this is, in fact, a change of use, and it won't automatically revert back to a car dealership.
All right, as long as I understand it, you know.
Yeah.
That's my interpretation.
Okay. Other other questions by any board members? Okay, Mr. Mr. Waldron, would you like to make any comments? Are you comfortable with this or?
Yeah, Bob Walden, building commissioner. I have no objections to this at all. I mean, I think it'd be a great use of the building.
Okay, thank you. What's next? Are there are there any in anyone in here in opposition to this project? Do we have anybody of Butters would like to speak to this project? Jennifer, are we hearing anybody?
Nope, nobody says anything.
Okay. So I I think our next step is we have to look at the six criteria, I believe, Mr. Decker. We have to look at the six criteria fifty-one, fifty-three, twenty-one, fifty-three, twenty-two, fifty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Everybody have those available available to look at? Okay, I will read them, and we'll go through them one at a time. And if you have comments, fifty-three, twenty-one, the social economic or community needs which are served by the proposal. Comments or questions? I take it that there's no problem. No one has any issues with all these?
All right. I mean, Adam Sokolowski.
Yes.
I feel as though that it's an existing building with no new construction besides a gate. And they're bringing jobs to the community. Potentially, you know, the spillover effect from clients coming to the community is an additional benefit where you have other people in business that may stay here at our hotels, visit historic Deerfield, visit, you know, stay at the Red Roof Inn, go to any one of our attractions. So I think that's that's positive. It's it's a much more positive. I think it's a positive and better use and less detrimental than a car dealership. You know, so that's that's my stance on that.
Anyone else for comments? I Adam, I also concur. I think it's it's a environment, a much safer situation, better use of it. And the economic effects, I think, which we'll discuss later, but I think are are good that we're getting people in town. When most places are losing businesses, we're able to gain businesses, and that's, to me, is a real plus for our community. Okay, fifty-three, twenty-two, traffic flow safety, including parking and loading. Anyone have any questions or comments? My comment is, I think we're going to be fine. I think we're going to have less traffic of this. Certainly enough of parking and loading because it was a car dealership. So they're they're well equipped for what I think from what I can tell, you're going to be you're going to be doing there. So I think that's that really fits the bill for what you're looking for. Anyone? Anyone else comments? Advocacy of utilities and public services fifty-three, twenty-three, comments? Adam, I mean, Alex?
No, I'm sorry. I was scratching, but I guess I'll just make a general statement. I think I think the project is benefits outweigh the there's not going to be. There's not going to be the, you know, Yankee Candle smell for miles. I don't think that's the case.
Do you want me to address that? Aromatic fillers. So it shouldn't be anything like historically that was you'd smell from Yankee Candle. Number one, it's the first of all, volume. When I was working, I ran the jar department. We would run a hundred and twenty thousand candles a day. We're talking about less than a thousand potentially and do it. But we also, like I explained to the the previous Zoom call, we use a little bit newer technology called Cougar Fillers, and they are they mix on the fly. So we don't have big tanks that have all the ingredients churning, and then it's going into the atmosphere. The ingredients stay separate, and they come together at the nozzle when they're distributed, they're dispensed. So it's about fifteen minutes until it skims over, and that's it contains that contains the odor and keeps it just churning out into the atmosphere. So it's a better technique. It's about ten-year-old technology, but of course, it's too hard. I don't have anything negative to say about Yankee Candle. Obviously, I'm a smoker or whatever, but they they're too big of a cruise ship to change to the new style. They have a lot of money invested in the method that they use.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Please, my real mic cough. Fifty-three, twenty-four, neighborhood characteristics and social structures. Comments?
You already changed is a chain link fence. Gate.
Okay. I don't think you're going to change the characteristics much. Think might improve a little bit, would not have a bunch of cars parked out there, though. I know there's some people that owned Volvos and Saabs that are upset that they're not here anymore, but I I think I think it fits the neighborhood pretty well. It's been there for a while, so we're not really changing anything.
Bernie?
Yes.
And I think that it's mindful that the gate matches the neighbors, and that'll protect the back of the property from activity that is unrelated to business and evenings.
Okay, thank you. That's Kathy Felton. Okay, impact on the natural environment through fifty-three, twenty-five. Comments?
Shouldn't have any effect is not changing the building or the or the driveways or anything else other than the gate.
Okay. Anyone else? I I concur with Mr. Decker. Well, last one, fifty-three, twenty-six, potential physical impact, including impacts on town services, tax base, and employment. Comments, questions?
Should provide some additional jobs.
That's Mr. Decker. Yes. Mr. Decker.
Yeah, career opportunities, additional jobs. So it's a positive.
I agree. I concur. It's a it's a real positive thing. We got, like I said, we got people moving to town that want to do business in town, which is going to improve our tax base. Whenever people are losing, we're we're gaining, and that's a that's a real plus for us. Any other comments? Okay. Since we have no one opposed, any closing comments by Tony or the other person we had, your lawyer, your counsel?
Christie.
Christie. Comments, Christie?
I would I would just note, just for the convenience of the board, that the the application packet does directly address on on page sixteen of the packet, does directly address comments on the special permit criteria. So if you wanted to try to use that as a framework for your decision, Mr. Mr. Wonteski's already already put that in.
Do not see it.
It's it's pretty far towards the back of the application packet. Obviously, you're free to do whatever you want with the decision.
I cannot find it.
Bernie?
Okay.
Yes.
You know, if you have the the packet that they the with you because it's on my desk, it wasn't what I gave you, but there you go. I have it in the office, and I can send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Are you lining the parking lot?
Where are you? This is Todd Green. We plan, as Tony mentioned, to line the ADA spaces. But otherwise, we wouldn't need to do it or weren't planning on doing it. I guess if if there were more folks eventually, more than a dozen or so people, we could do it if we needed to, but everybody should be parking on that north parking lot. Nothing should be parking in front or by the the south side where the chain.
And I didn't see, did you have a sign?
So what we're doing about the sign is there are two existing ones on the north side to the Saab dealer. They had a Scania for Saab and this word Saab. I'm replacing the exact fascia with just our logo, which says aromatic, and then the square sign that said Scania, it's going to be the logo for the National Candle Association that we're a member of it. I tried to just use the same thing and come up with a good plan, so it looks nice. And I guess my final comment is, like we do in Greenfield, we will, we're we're a good neighbor. We're considerate of our neighbors. We'll try to improve the property more than there shouldn't be anything detrimental happening there.
And I didn't remember if you said this at the planning board, you're not taking down or are you adding more trees or?
No, one of the, I think one of the neighbors or somebody from the community said it would be nice if you planted some trees. And I took a look at it today, and I don't know if that can be done in that in the tree belts, but you know, I'm not opposed to it. I don't want to be on the hook to do it before I even move in, but I think you could probably put like crab apple trees or some small tree on the tree belt. That's dependent on whether it's allowed. I don't know what DOT or the town would say, but not opposed to it.
Probably, once I would recommend to Todd, once we he gets in and starts operating and and really sees the demand for parking in that, then at that point, maybe there could be some reduction in the existing asphalt areas where some additional landscaping could be provided. You know, you're probably not going to do anything in the right way with five and ten is that, you know, state area. Plus, you want to have good visibility and sight distance. But along the sides, I'm thinking on the north, north side, there might be an opportunity to do some some stuff there, but we have plenty of room for snow storage, you know, with fifteen people. I mean, that lot probably holds a hundred cars. And we're going to have fifteen, you know, at the most, and then another four if you have potential new customers or whatever coming by. I mean, twenty parking spaces maybe at the most is really at the need right now.
In the rare occasion, this is Todd Green again, and the rare occasion, we have seventy-two employees. If we had everybody go there, we still wouldn't have more vehicles than were there when it was a dealership.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about that. I was just like if mostly what it was look what it looks like, but you know, that's yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to close discussion?
Move.
Oh, do I have a second?
Seconded, Adam.
Okay. Vote to close discussion. Ms. Felton?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Yes.
And Alex?
Yes.
And I vote. So it's unanimous to close discussion. I think what we'll do is if the attorney feels comfortable, I'm going to read each one, and we're going to just take a straw vote of what that's going to be if we agree that each one of these topics has been covered, and we feel comfortable with those. Will that be all right with you, Christie?
That's fine. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go through them, and if you vote yes or no, please make your opinion opinion made, and then we're going to take a final vote on accepting it. Fifty-three, Mister Decker, yes.
Question?
Yeah.
The file requires us to to say that it meets all the criterias, okay? Do you really want to go through and and pick these off one by one? Because if you do go through and pick these off one by one, and one of them comes up to the negative, you might might scuttle the whole petition.
Okay, I don't I don't I don't perceive we've got any negatives here, but
That that you didn't do anything, Bernie. That computer's just going to make that noise.
Okay. I just felt that we, you know, cover each one so that it's bulletproof, but if if Mr. Decker, we want to do it as a whole thing that we accept it with no no findings of negatives, then we can do it that way. But I'm leaving it up to you, attorney, that you're the expert in these areas much more than I am.
Well, I think during the discussion portion on the record, you all agreed that the criteria had been met, so I don't see I don't see that you need to go back through the criteria individually again. Again, it's your you're the zoning board, and it's your
Mr. Coster, I want to make a motion, if you'd like, Adam?
Yes.
I make a motion that we vote to approve the special permit.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have we have a motion to accept it. Now we're going to take the formal vote, please.
A discussion. After you have a second, you have discussion. Question is, should we not refer this to counsel to draw they draw the permit? Because it there's all kinds of things that are outlined in the petitioner's thing, or we can just encompass incorporate what he says in his presentation. Up to you.
Well, I felt comfortable with his presentation, but that's just me. I thought he covered everything.
But what I'm trying to say is, do we do we want to turn around and refer back to to his application? And
Yes, Mr. Mr. Sokolowski.
Well, I think Mr. Decker has a point that although on face value, this these folks are, you know, a hundred percent on the up and up, we should incorporate their application in the approval that, you know, they are going to do the things that they said, like matching the fence and, you know, or making the fence similar to the neighbor's fence and you know, not change the lighting and all that, not just give a blanket special permit. So I don't know if we should have that that document that was shown incorporated as the conditions of it, or we vote basically that we're going to agree to our straw vote that we could agree to it and have Mr. Costa review it and then do the formal vote in at our next meeting.
Okay, it's it's totally up to what the board decides. I'm comfortable with the one I I kind of trust them. They're going to do that, but we've, I guess.
It might not be them down the road. That's the thing.
Right. Okay. Okay.
You can condition the permit. If you wanted to, you could condition the permit as as not as being reviewable if there's a change of ownership. That's that's another way to do it.
Yeah.
That's typical, actually. If there was a change in use and would trigger, they would have to come back. That new owner would have to come back for a special permit. See, the special permits typically Special permit. See, the special permits typically go with the applicant, not with the property, in my opinion. Christie, is that typically the way it is?
It's, it varies from community to community. Deerfield historically has not done that. Um, a lot of other towns do. There's no reason Deerfield couldn't impose such a condition. It might make it easier than, that you could vote the. You can sort of vote the permit as per the contents of the application and then have a written decision that incorporate findings that you already discussed. And then have a condition of the permit be that the permit would e- would either have to be reviewed. Or would even potentially expire on a change of use or change of ownership.
Well, the ownership, the ownership.
Mr., Mr. Decker, please identify yourself and I, I'm getting background noise, please. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman Bob Decker. The thing is, the owner of the real estate is different than the owner, than the petitioner for this change. Okay, so that they're not the same. So just to be cognizant of that. We're, the board is gonna vote to grant a permit for this use, but it's gonna be just issued to the, the petitioner. It's not being issued to the people that own the real estate.
That's correct.
So.
So I get the feeling we wanna have our council drop, we straw poll, this is what we want, but have our attorney drop a. Formal um, acceptance with the conditions.
I think so.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Mr. Sokolowski.
I'll withdraw my motion then.
Yeah.
And then I'll make a new motion.
Okay.
That. The board uh, vote to accept or vote, will vote at the next meeting to accept. Uh, or grant the special permit because we find that the applicant has um. Met the criteria set forth in the bylaw. And therefore, the uh, we will, we will incorporate the um, recommendation of uh, wording of. The applicant's counsel. And have it reviewed by our lawyer to include their specific proposal. And include that the uh, special permit is granted to this corporation and then uh. And then it would uh, expire if there was a change in ownership of the uh, occupant, of the leasing.
Okay, uh, Attorney Bowden, question, comment?
Are you asking me to write the special permit decision and conditions? I don't understand what you're asking to be. I don't know why you can't vote the permit tonight. I don't understand. Uh, Jennifer, can you?
Yes, um, Bernie, if I may.
Yes, Jen, go ahead.
So, what I would recommend that the board do is say that you are. Agreeing that this permit is gonna be issued with the condition of. Uh, upon change of ownership of the business. Um, that they need, that the permit is um, has expired. Or if there's any changes to their plan of the business. This permit is expired and they need to come back to the board. And you can just say that and we can have Adam write it up. He can listen to this meeting and. Then it would start its uh, appeal period once this, it's been written. Well, you have the time period to have it written and then um. Filed with the clerk and then it starts this appeal period there. I think it.
That sounds mu- that's, Adam, sounds much better to me. I just, you know, I don't wanna uh, hold these folks up at all, but I do wanna protect their interests moving forward.
Yeah, I, I think that because you've all agreed to everything and you've gone through, we'll write a, a, a decision and. Just put those conditions. If there's any other conditions that you're thinking of, I think you just state it now, um, so that. Their whole team can hear what you're saying, such as what Kathy said about the fence. So. That would be a condition that you're putting here and you would say, you know, we wanna know what, what the fence is gonna look like. That would be a condition on the permit. Um. But I think the big one is just upon the change of ownership of the business. But that's, I mean, I, I've seen this many times before, but it's up to you, Chair. Whatever you feel comfortable with. And then he would listen to this meeting. I'll tell him what happened and he could write it up for us and for you to review.
Okay, um. Does anyone else have any other conditions they wanna put on there?
I, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Decker.
Uh, I just want to have counsel draw the, draw the conditions, et cetera. And if he thinks something that we've missed, bring it back to us and uh, if it sounds reasonable, we'll incorporate it in the decision. When we voted. I just wanna make sure that we're not overlooking something that we should be looking at. And that's why you have counsel look at things before you sign them.
Yes, I agree. We, we're, we have to be consistent in how we approach these special permits. Does everyone agree? Well, I think we need to be consistent in how we approach these special permits. Anyone object to that? Okay, so basically, we're saying it's okay, but we're gonna have our council draw the conditions and then what we'll do is. We have our next meeting in.
January fourteenth, was it?
January fourteenth, right. So um. We would draw that up and then we'll take our formal vote at that time.
Could we have, could we ask our counsel to uh, carbon copy or send it to the lawyer for the petitioner? To make sure that there's no problems ahead of time?
I agree. I think that would be a very good idea. Ms. Bowen, questions or comments?
Um, my question is, Mr. Uh, the, the aromatic fillers had. Anticipated, we filed the application um, as quickly as we possibly could because they were anticipating starting. Using the building late December, early January and I'm just one, and if you don't vote to approve the use. The question is, can he proceed at his own peril? It sounds like you want the decision written before you vote the permit. That's oftentimes. ZBAs will vote the decision and then issue, you know, issue the permit. Issue, issue the written decision later and it sounds like you want the written decision first before you're gonna vote it and I. That's not typical in my experience. So that's what, why I'm questioning. Um, you could vote. The special permit, but then your written decision doesn't go into effect until it's written, but at least we'd know that. You'd approved the permit, you know, pending the, the actual written decision being filed with the town clerk. Does that make sense?
Does that make sense to you, Jen?
It does.
But I don't want. If we make a decision today, this is Alex, um, if we make a decision today, doesn't that start the twenty day?
Well, they have thirty days. Write the decision.
Oh, okay, okay.
Decision is written, it gets filed with the clerk.
Then we get twenty days.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I. If, if Jen in her experience is fine with it, I'm fine with it voting it tonight. Um, and I'm also fine, I understand they wanna get going. I, I'm also fine with if we have to meet sooner. If that would make people more comfortable. I mean, I don't know if we give council a week to turn something like this around. Um, I'm fine with voting it and then e- either way.
This is Kathy. Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with, with uh, Adam and with Jen that I would feel comfortable voting, go ahead and voting it. And then putting the conditions in the statement in place later, so we are business friendly and they can start moving with their.
Mr. Decker.
I just, I just wanna make sure that we tie up the loose ends legally.
You will.
Okay. I'm not trying to s- slow it down. I just wanna make sure we do it right. Okay.
Well, I assume we've got a consensus here that we could take a vote tonight on this. Anybody object, kind of uh, objecting to that? Okay, do I have a motion to take a vote on this, that we accept um. Aromatics. Application for, for a special permit of the property located two fifty-three Greenfield Road to utilize existing building for a new client showroom design. And develop a new products testing, light manufacturing, set products for which includes candles, diffusers. Read diffusers and soaps and sanitizers. We take, we vote, yes, we are going to vote to accept that. So yes, vote means we accept the application. For this project. Comments? Are we ready to take a vote? I guess we are.
You need a second.
I'll second it, Adam.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kathy?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's a unanimous decision. To grant the special permit um, to aromatic. Can I refer to it as aromatic fillers? Is that comfortable for you? Okay.
That's, that's fine, yes.
We're trying to. Be as business friendly as we can.
We really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming to town and um, being part of our community. I think you'll be a welcome group to us. I, I'm, I'm happy to see that. We're utilizing our, our spaces and providing uh. I'm gonna say income to the town and that's a kind of a.
And good jobs, you know?
Yeah, and good jobs, I think. And, and, you know, I think you'll do fine. I think you can find, I think you presented a good program. Um. And we'll have that, our attorney draw that up. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Then um.
When you.
We have to vote on that again. I don't think we have to, do we? Okay, so we'll get attorney, we'll get that uh, the audit condition to you and then if there's any issues, just get back to us. I believe that's how we handle this. I'm a greenhorn in this thing, so I'm, you have to bear with me.
Trust Jen, she knows what she's doing.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's not, as somebody pointed out last night, it's not an order of conditions. It's conditions.
Conditions. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Now, if we get right last night, so I just wanna make sure.
If they're all easy, right? All right, uh, do we have any other business, Mr. Chair? Can we get out of here?
No, I don't. Do we, do I have a motion to close? Um, oh, do we have any other business?
Yeah, can we um, can we have everybody review the minutes from the, the, not the previous meeting that. Not yesterday and not the last one, but October and um, September. I don't think we approved those minutes. Um, just so they're not hanging around. We don't have to do it tonight, just so we can do that in our next meeting or something. So where you have, cause I don't think we've approved them.
I don't think we have either.
I think I didn't wanna approve them till I read them.
Okay. Yes, Ken.
Tonight's meeting, I didn't hit record for the first bit. I'm really sorry. So Alex, when you write the minutes, can you kind of say? There was just open discussion and then go from there, cause then that would be our, our.
Do my best.
So, anyway, uh, everybody have a nice Christmas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you too.
Yeah, Mr. Green, thank you for being patient with us, especially with me. This is a. It's a daunting job at times. I'm not a very legal person and just trying to do the best, do the best I can. I know I. I'm lucky, I got good board members to help me out. Okay, enough said, let's have a vote to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you.
I was gonna say, uh, thank you to everybody for uh, the meeting and um, ha- hopefully you have a good holiday. And um, when we are there, you're certainly welcome to visit, so you can see what we do.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll take a look at it. Okay, uh, Jen, question?
No, I was just waving.
Okay, so what, we have, I have a second to close, correct?
Second.
Second, okay, um.
Kathy's second. Kathy's second.
Okay, uh, I vote yes to close the meeting. Ms. Felton?
Yes.
Ms. Felton?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Yes.
And. Alex?
Uh, yes.
Okay, unanimous decision to close the meeting. Thank you. We won't see each other until uh, June fourteen, July. January fourteenth.
Get some rest, Bernie.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen, for being so patient tonight.